Good evening, welcome to Davidson County Board of Commissioners for Monday, November the 13th. We welcome you here, we appreciate you coming to participate in the county business. We have an invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Shill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those who would like to join me. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Father, for this opportunity to come together as free people. As I look across the folk that's here tonight, I'm thankful, Father, for their appearance. I'm thankful that their help allowed them to come, and those who are at home, I'm happy to hear or see that they are online and connected with the business of the people. Father, we too often think about all that we want and all that we don't have, and give a little reflection on the many, many blessings that you have granted to us. Father, we pray for your wisdom, your strength, and your guidance as we conduct the business of the people. Thank you, Father, for it is Jesus' precious name I pray, amen.
Amen.
We got a flag at the back, we can have it back there so that we don't turn our back on you, and then there's one up here for you folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Visitor from across the way a little bit, Thomasville Councilman Doug Hunt. Appreciate you having, appreciate you. Commissioner Shill, if you want to take care of the visitors.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've started a tradition here, and we recognize our veterans. And before I do that, I'd just like to say publicly, thank you to each and every citizen, thank you to each and every business in Davidson County. Thank you to the city of Thomasville, the city of Lexington, Midway, everybody that took place in the Operation Green Light for Veterans. It was an amazing success, and it really looked good as you went across this great county and saw all the businesses and all the municipal buildings and so forth lit up. So I appreciate each and every one of you, thank you very much. With that being said, do we have any veterans in the house tonight? If we do, and you've not received one of these pins, would you please come up and let me give you a pin? And if you would stand up and be recognized, all of you, any of you. Everybody get, you got a pin, sir? Okay, perfect. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we appreciate it. We have recognition from the Council of Chambers, Andrew Clement of Thomasville Area Chamber of Commerce. Is he here? Okado. And then we have Captain Stephanie Murphus, who's going to receive some recognition from our sheriff.
It's a bittersweet night, um, come Fri- or bittersweet Friday. I watched this young lady as a little bitty girl, I said, when I, when she came into law enforcement, I'd been in the highway patrol, we become good friends, and we, she worked some really solid cases that helped some people I knew, so she's solid as a rock. She's the first captain of Detective Division that is a female. So first female captain in Davidson County's history, so pretty cool. And she's, she's just been a, she's just been a rock and a wall, and we're going to miss her. She's as good as they come and as smart as they come. And hopefully, I can twist her arm and get her back, maybe some part-time stuff and everything. But we're going to miss her, and she's got a lot of folks, anybody won't say anything. Well, we're having a little get-together for Friday, so everybody's invited. We want you to come out to the sheriff's office. Anything you want to say?
I mean, it's been an honor to work for Davidson County and the Davidson County Sheriff's Office. I've been here my whole entire 30 years. It's just been, it's been a great career for me, and I appreciate the sheriff giving me the opportunity.
We're so tickled, and it's a, it's a rising thing. We're seeing more that's got their 30 years with the Davidson County Sheriff's Office, and that's a wonderful thing to see, that she's made it to the finish line, and she gets the goody for all she's given to this county.
It's, it's bittersweet, it hasn't been an easy decision.
She's very, very deserving, so we're asking for her sidearm and her, and her shield or her badge, her star to go with her.
Go ahead, Shill.
Stephanie, I remember when you came to work for the Sheriff's Department. You're telling me how old I am. You look like a kid, and with the exception of a few gray hairs now, you still look like a kid, but you've always been the nicest, most professional person that any citizen could ask for. Thank you for your service.
I am gray, it's coming on.
Well, look at this.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, something.
Stephanie, I've known you a long time. You've always been a great officer and a great asset to this county. It is going to be a loss to the county, but this is definitely something that you're going to enjoy. I highly recommend retirement. Welcome to the 25th of the Month Club. And thank you for everything that you've done for Davidson County.
Thank you, James.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Murph, I don't know where to, I don't know where to begin. You know, I grew up here at this county, 18. My dad worked here for 45 years, he absolutely loved you to death. Being over the garage and taking care of all the, all the patrol cars. When inclement weather came in, I was up in the middle of the night with Dad. And we would come here, and I got to meet a lot of y'all, and I've known you from day one. And I grew up here with you, and I'm going to tell you, I love and appreciate you. You've always been the epitome of what being, just what being a perfect deputy would be. And I'm thankful that you have had the chance to protect my community and my family, and I'm going to miss you, and we love you and appreciate you, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to miss you too.
Amen. Do we have anyone, what's the call, comment?
I just want to tell her congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Todd.
Much deserved, yep.
Thank you very much.
That's a ditto, and I think it deserves a rig, real big hand. Amen.
We need to get a couple of pictures. A couple of pictures, yes, yes, yes.
You ain't getting that easy.
Sheriff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
You're going to have the whole.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. And one.
Appreciate y'all. Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. Carry yourself.
You be good. Great day, Sheriff. You did a great job, thank you.
She's always been good. Amen.
She's time to register for public address if you wish to speak to the commissioners at the time. You need to put your name down. On the agenda, Mr. Smith has asked that the Agenda Item A.G. approve local government certification giving one in safe funding consideration to Project Next. I'm sure y'all knew all that, right? The next one will request a scheduled hearing to be removed from the agenda and will be scheduled at an upcoming day. Also, our attorney Chuck Frye has requested the approval of the sewer system Eastmont for Yadkin River Park be added to the consent agenda as Agenda Item A.V. Are there any other add-ons or deletes?
Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve the agenda.
Say. Motion made, the second, cast your vote.
All the votes are in. And that motion carries by vote at 7-0.
Thank you. I think that the first thing that we have on the agenda is a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, we have public address.
Huh?
Public address is next.
I didn't think they had one.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
I've got to get the list back up here.
I've done that what? 10 times in a row, and nobody's ever had one. Thank you for the reminder. Oh, man, we got more than one. Jackie Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jackie Taylor, and I have been a resident of Davidson County for 19 years. And I've also been a volunteer for senior services during the years of 2014 and 2015. So now I want to talk to you about the sentencing hearing for the Ha Martens and Molly Martens Corbett hearing that they just had. I went there to support the Corbett family and also to learn. Couple things that I learned that was very bizarre. The defense had some witnesses who were accepted by the court as experts, and this one witness said that even though Molly had said some really outlandish things that I would interpret as bizarre lies, he said that because she didn't say it under oath, therefore it's not a lie. Now, I know a lie, I want to hear one, and I'm real fast to call people out on lies and things like that, but according to the expert witness, if you don't say it under oath, it's not a lie. He said, and I'm paraphrasing, that she's living out her dream. I thought it was crazy. Another thing that they said from an expert witness was, um, the prosecution asked him, after seeing all the photographs of Jason Corbett, after he had been bludgeoned to death with a baseball bat and a brick, his head, brains, skull, hair, on the ceilings and the carpet, on the walls, after seeing all of that, the prosecution asked him, was it excessive? And he said, no, it just shows how terrified they were. Which of course, you know, the Corbett side, we erupted in displeasure, and I even flirted out, what an idiot. And luckily for me, the judge just gave us a warning, because I should not have done that, but it was one of those spontaneous remarks, and afterwards, a lot of people said, I just said what they were thinking. But anyway, it just blows my mind that that came from expert witnesses. And so I will close with going back to me telling you that I was a volunteer for senior services. Well, senior services is a government agency, and it's under y'all's control. And this with Jason Corbett happened in August of 2015. And the senior services employee told us that her husband worked for Jason Corbett. He wasn't well-liked at the plant, and she said Jason got what he deserved. I was very, very upset over that, and I called her out on that, and I even told the director, that's not the kind of stuff that they should be talking about. Well, and I felt that way in 2015, and I feel that way today. Government employees are especially.
Three minutes, ma'am, three minutes.
Thank you, bye.
We appreciate it, Ms. Taylor. There's a lot of folks on here to speak for Morrison Grove. Is that for the rezoning? It's not? Okay, if it's for the rezoning, when we call it to order, you will have an opportunity to speak.
Let me rephrase, no, it's not about the rezoning.
Okay. Richard Nance? Or Vance, I think it's Nance.
Good evening, thank you Davidson County Commissioners for allowing my time. My name's Richard Nance, I live at Hedrick Mill Road, land adjacent to the Morrison Grove Events Center. I'm here as a liaison with my fellow neighbors that are here tonight, there are several of you, please raise your hand, they're on the list as well. Some could not make it here tonight because they're infirm and elderly, and pulling them out this time of night was not feasible for them. I am one voice, but I speak for many who are right behind me. I'm also speaking for my wife, Amy Beck, and myself.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
You addressed the board, there's no sense in addressing the crowd.
I understand. So if it pleases the board, I can, we can have the neighbors say who they are, or we can skip that part, and when they have the opportunity, they're on the list.
We're going to have this rezoning request, and everybody will be allowed to speak at that time.
Okay, so it's not a rezoning request, sir?
Okay.
Okay. Last spring, the county commissioners voted allowing Mr. Rhodes to continue to operate Morrison Grove, and at that time, our quiet community. There are many conditions that Mr. Rhodes promised during his zoning application that have not been followed there, as follows. The events to be a clean and safe environment. The cleanliness of the ground with the beer cans, bottles, trash, bags, et cetera, left on the grounds blowing in a neighbor's yard. Nor do the neighbors feel safe in the events that are being held. The character of the existing neighborhood will not be harmed in any way whatsoever as this request. If you go back to the video from the 27th at five, excuse me, 50 minutes and 39 seconds, he states that the noise will be at controlled levels, and at 51 minutes, 5 seconds, he states that, Mr. Rhodes states that the character of the existing neighborhood will not be harmed in a way. Along with the benefit to the applicant, there will be a greater benefit to the surrounding community. That was a complete fabrication to the board, because that's what you needed to hear at the time to approve him. It only benefits Mr. Rhodes. It is harming our existing community and our neighborhood. Application number 15 reads that the applicant will take necessary steps to ensure that the sound is contained into the building, that's not the case. On numerous occasions, noise level has been so loud, you can hear them over TVs and homes with the door shut. I have several witnesses that contest that, they were a mile away. Davidson County Sheriff's Department's been called multiple times, no less than four times each night for the noise. This puts a strain on Sheriff's Department's resources. Sheriff is here tonight, Sheriff Ritchie advised us to show up here tonight and speak to you directly about it. The noise level go on late in the evenings, on the 4th, it went on until 12:20. The traffic of trucks that came out did not leave until 1:15 in the morning. That was, the noise went on for more than three to six hours, it was over 12 hours.
Give him a couple more minutes.
Thank you. We deserve to have our peace and quiet back as homeowners. The outside lighting is now to be shielded and directed downward to subject property in order to eliminate unnecessary illumination of adjoining residential properties. That's not the case, it is still widely available to be seen inside homes. Currently, from what we can find today, there's no health inspection has been posted anywhere online for the Health Department. We find it's amazing that the business can operate like this. And we, the neighbors, are asking you to revoke the zoning approval, or at least get the Sheriff's Department written approval to enforce the conditions that were agreed upon by Mr. Rhodes. Please help stop the madness, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. And I apologize to you folks, I had made an assumption, and that's always a bad thing, but we appreciate you coming for the, has, have y'all addressed this?
Certainly have heard from the neighborhood on multiple occasions. We spoke to the owner of Morrison's Grove, Mr. Rhodes. He has confirmed to us that it was excessively loud, more than he had wanted to. He believes that there's a certain group that he has went into contract with. He believes that there's a certain group that he has, um, went into contract with that have certain gatherings. And he was committed to them for several activities that got excessive and out of hand. He was telling us that that no longer is going to happen, time will tell. But we, uh, we certainly are looking into the lighting situation and the noise. There's nothing we can do about the noise presently. The only thing we can do is cut down on him extending the time that his activities occur past twelve o'clock. He's not allowed to do that, and we can certainly go after that. Whether we can revoke the, or, uh, his special use permit, well, he actually got a rezoning done, so it's a little bit more difficult to, to change or to punish him in that regards, other than the condition of being broken about the length of time for the activity. But we are ongoing talking with Mr. Rhodes, but it certainly has, I understand the frustration to live out there. We've heard from multiple people from many parts of the, um, of the community out there, and it is, it is a problem that we, we can, we, um, confirm that.
Do y'all are enforcing what conditions are there?
Well, we really don't have much to enforce, and that's the difficulty. And that's why we've put him on the Sheriff's Department to see when the time, when the noise gets excessive, the deputies come out, from what we're hearing from the public, they will cut it down. Once the deputy arrives, when he leaves after an hour, they crank it back up again. So it's, it's a continuing problem that the property owner should take care of. And, um, we're, we're continuing to try to reach out to him.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If, correct me if I'm wrong, we handle so many, sometimes it's, uh, it's sort of mangled together. Weren't there stipulations made at that time and promises made by him in order to, to acquire the approval of the board for that? And wasn't one of those, the noise issue that he's promised, so is he not in violation of that if, if that's found to be?
It's, it's a, it's a good point, Mr. Sheldon, you're correct. At the time, when he was in front of this board, he did say he wanted to be a good neighbor. He was going, he knew that Mr. Morrison, who ran it previously for twenty years prior, was a good neighbor. You didn't hear this type of complaint with Mr. Morrison. So he did make some, some verbal commitments to us. In the conditions that you just heard, one of those conditions was that he was going to contain the noise within the building. And from what we're hearing, late in the evening, it gets hot or whatever, and they open the doors and the sound comes out. And we can certainly go after him on that respect. We did not set a decibel level or a noise level that he could not exceed, and that's the difficulty that we at the zoning department have. That's why a deputy comes out and judges with his own ears at his own time. This is excessive, given the lateness of the hour, and he'll tell them to cut it down. But nothing that we can put in writing, other than the containment of the noise in the building, can we go after now. It was mainly the property owner trying to get a rezoning, saying he was going to be a good neighbor and he was willing to do this and do that. And even if he breaks his word on that, I'm not sure legally if we can, uh, pull back on the rezoning portion of this. We would have to go after a, a, a violation of one of those conditions, which we have a way into this containment part of it. We can, we can go and exercise that, even if we have to show up at the next meeting or at the next activity and judge it ourselves.
All right, thank you.
And, and he violated the, um, the special use by the twelve-twenty-four AM.
He did, not allowed to go past midnight, and, and apparently he has done that, uh, from, from what we're hearing from the, uh, the folks. And I, I received emails from them, uh, over weekends when they were saying he's still going. So I, I can confirm that they were telling the truth on that.
And the sheriff could document that, I'm sure if he's out there after midnight, so...
Scott, I remember adamantly talking about the, the Health Department stuff, too. He was operating, selling alcohol and doing stuff out there without a license. Uh, and then we, we, can you validate the accusations that's being made by the gentleman that came up? Is, is he in that same format now?
I cannot validate any violation with the Health Department.
Gotcha.
Um, they, they were concerned about the septic system and the availability of the kitchen. It had to reach a level where they could actually use the kitchen as a cooking area, and I'm not sure if that is occurring, or at what level the Health Department is satisfied with this particular, um, location.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. I'm gonna allow, uh, anyone who wants to speak from the Morrison Grove folks, uh, to come up and do it. You put your name down to speak, and you certainly can do that. I don't know that anybody can do any better than Mr. Nance has done, he's really laid it out. But if somebody wants to speak, please come forward and speak.
I'm Tim Garner, and I prefer to...
You have to come up, sir?
Yep. You know, I prefer some of it to Richard, 'cause he's got a lot of them. But I'm Tim Garner and I live right beside of it. Which I guess Larry Morrison sort of looked after us. He didn't make none of the neighbors mad, he done exactly what he said he was going to do. Never did hear nothing inside that building. But then I sort of, I keep the yard and stuff mowing around there, and I told Scott, I said, you need to calm it down, you're gonna get all the neighbors sort of upset. Well, I've got pictures and videos, and it went on to twelve-eighteen Saturday before night, it was, it was out loud. And I guess they was parking out in the grass, out in the field, and when it sort of ended, say twelve-thirty, they was outside, I guess just hollering and loud, and I guess probably the last veh- vehicle I heard probably left about one-fifteen. They all just tore off, you know, and then Sunday morning, there was bottles, cans, plates. And they do get half of it, but when, I guess when the wind gets up, I get the other half over in my yard, so... And they did have somebody catering, I don't know if it's, something's going on for three weeks. There was fourteen cars over, fourteen hours a day for three weeks, fixing food, coming and going, I don't... And there was tractor-trailer with, um, refrigeration system going twenty-four-seven. That was going on over there, so... But yeah, I don't know, that's the only thing, I guess, well, we went to a motorcycle race, this is the first expanded party, I guess. We went to Cool Ridge for a motorcycle flat track race, and we come back at nine-thirty at my buddy's house, six of us got out. And we heard that boom, 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 and from his driveway to my driveway was two miles. I mean, you could just plainly hear it, it was out loud. And, uh, but that's mainly, I mean, they just, I guess just the noise is the biggest thing. 'Cause it went on to say twelve-thirty, around at twelve-thirty at night. I mean, I've got some videos, you wouldn't believe how loud it was.
Yeah, if you could, uh, make sure that Scott knows about the fourteen vehicles there for all day.
Yeah.
And we'll look into that.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, uh, what was going on, but I counted fourteen over, and they worked in, working twelve, fourteen hours a day, seven days a week fixing food, and they was coming, they put it in a cover truck, take it, and an hour later, they coming back.
All right, we thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate you. Anyone else would like to speak? Feel free. You put your name down, you can speak.
What? I work at, uh, Forsyth Hospital, and I have to get up at three o'clock in the morning.
Hmm.
So that night, I may have got an hour's sleep, I put pillows on each side of my head. I could still hear the, the bass boom-boom, but at least it did deafen down the singing and stuff like that. It sounded like everybody was outside, I mean, just screaming, hollering, and I, it was unbelievable. And I went to work with, uh, hours sleeping, I'm getting HIV. And what goes in don't come back out. I'm getting chemo drugs and everything, and I, I mean, when I got to work that morning, I told the pharmacist I worked with to be sure and watch everything I did that day. Because, you know, I, I was not clearing my head. And there's no sense in that kind of noise, that late at night.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the Morrison folks that wants to speak out there? Feel free. Feel free.
Mr. Frank defer his time?
I'm sorry?
Can Mr. Frank defer his time?
I, I, what's he saying?
Defer his time. I'm good with it if you will.
Defer his time.
Uh, he wants to defer it back to Mr. Vance, I guess, to...
Yeah.
I didn't understand what he's asking. Like, that's our him. He usually say, I want to speak. State your name.
Gentlemen, I'm Bill Frank. Uh, I've been living in this, uh, neighborhood all my life, married life, uh, sixty-one and a half years. And, uh, Mr. Morrison run a business that was respectable to the community. Whoever bought, this fellow that has bought this, thought he was going to come in and evidently do what he wanted to, regardless of the neighborhood. This racket that we're putting up with is unbelievable, could be heard as much as two and a half to three miles away. You understand that? Now, I'm here, I would vote to close him down if possible. There's no sense in all this racket that can be heard, twelve hours of it. And incidentally, I understand, he was not supposed to run this thing after twelve o'clock. It was not shut down, I'm, I understand, until eighteen minutes after the, uh, midnight. So I'm here to request either shut him down or do something, and make a noise law or some, something that... Uh, I understand this county does not have a, a, a noise ordinance. And I also understand that the city does, and I'm, I understand that they've kicked him out of the town. So here we are putting up with this, something I've never had to put up with in my life. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. Folks, I'm busy with the handicap.
I think there's a lot of us that join that continent, maybe not to that extent.
So one of the questions that Mr. Frank and I had discussed with Tim Garner yesterday was, Mr. Frank had extensive conversations with the sheriff two times this past week, and they'd asked to come up, told us to come up here. Um, from what we understand, speaking to sheriff, not speaking for him, but speaking with sheriff, that his hands are kind of tied because there is no ordinance. And they were tying up their resources, we don't want to do that. The, honestly, it was life and death situations that we may be tying up. We just want to, something resolved and whatever the sheriff's power needs to be given, to be able to get the noise down to, you know, we look for inside the building, 'cause that's what we were promised, but just a reasonable amount, I mean...
We thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
I got a question for Chuck. I guess with disturbing the peace, I mean, is there not something on the books already that, um, would protect somebody's rights, uh, as far as noise?
Well, the, yes, there is, um, and, you know, the, from time to time, issues come up about noise. There is not an, an ordinance which really speaks to this any more clearly than the criminal statutes do with regard to that. Uh, one thing I hear from the concerns that have been raised by the several people that have spoken tonight is we need to go back, and, uh, Mr. Leonard and I will do that after this meeting, to take a look at what directly were the conditions that were placed on this property. Uh, I was trying to find that and have not found that while the people were talking. Uh, but I think perhaps a more direct, uh, way to direct this or to, to address this is to look at those conditions, um, and I think also, um, first thing tomorrow, I'll make a call to our Health Director, because I think they will be, uh, concerned about the potential of, um, uh, business occurring over there that may exceed their, uh, authority to, to conduct that.
But if they're not serving any food at these parties from that kitchen, then the Health Department wouldn't have any...
If they're cooking there.
Right, if they're cooking there, but if they're not, then...
They have the facilities back there to cook.
Right, I get that. But now, it's, it sounds like maybe they was doing some catering during these fourteen days or whatever, that...
Yes.
They were somebody in and out, and that kind of sounds like it, but I'm pretty sure the Health Department would have to catch them in the act there, um...
Historically, that has been a, a problem there.
Do we still have a disturbing the peace ordinance? I didn't think, I thought they repealed it.
Conduct is what it's called.
Yeah.
It, it covers violent conduct, is my understanding, yes, two eighty-eight point four.
Yeah.
And that, that's why when I don't know anything, we have that we can do something with it. I did speak to Mr. Rhodes and just try to, in behalf of the neighborhood, and I spoke to Mr., Mr. Frank, and, uh, and, uh, had a nice conversation with him, but I said bring it before, and I know that they're just nice peaceful people, and that's what they want. They want their...
Amen. We thank you. Just continue to work with them as you can.
We, we responded and we quieted down for a little bit, but then it would come back, is my understanding, is that right, Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Yeah, and, but just had no teeth to...
No teeth, yeah. All right.
I mean, anything after twelve, they, it's definitely breaking the, uh, the permitted time, so...
Yeah, and I've made that perfectly clear to him, too, when I talked to him.
So Chuck, they...
I'm just trying to be the peacemaker in the between.
Man.
There's nothing to hang the hat on as far as noise, uh...
Again, I think the conditions, and, um, and I was trying to research this as we're talking. Scott, is there presently a special use permit on that property?
Special, the special use permit ended with the, uh, change of ownership because it, he did not qualify for the, uh, the previous special use permit because he sold the house off separately. So he had to rezonate as a commercial venture, which allowed him to operate it with less, um, without special use conditions on it. Um, so we, it's, that's why it's more difficult to revoke. A special use permit, if you break a condition, you can revoke the permit. When you rezonate the property, um, I'm not sure how we rectify that, um, because it's, it's pretty much a legislative decision at that time.
Thank you. We appreciate, uh, the folks that have come up and given, uh, the testimony. And there have been some, some ideas by several commissioners to look into it, and I'm sure that they will. And our attorney is also going to look into it. We appreciate you, yes, sir.
I apologize.
That's all right.
One more question, just to kind of help, like, Mr. Frank and some of our elderly community. They have wanted me to represent them as our neighbor, as I did the last time. Is there some legal document or something we need to provide you guys so when I come up, the next time this comes around, that we don't have to bring Mr. Frank out and some of our other elderly out of the homes?
That, that would be a, a question for the, um, zoning folks and for our council.
Can I just get with you, Scott? Okay, I'll get with Scott, thank you very much.
And I can understand your question, 'cause last time, I think you were speaking for them, but you...
I was, and I got called a liar.
That you were, you, you know, you could, so I understand your question, then.
Okay, thank you.
Get him any of those pictures y'all got, okay, from, from this gentleman here or whatever, so...
All right. Our public hearing. You folks are not obligated to stay in here if you need to go. Mr. Leonard, you want to introduce this request?
I will, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Crook is under the weather tonight, so I'm going to sit in for him on this one rezoning request in the name of Heather and Garrett Cox. Now, I'm gonna read the, the legal advertisement. It's a request by Heather and Garrett Cox to rezone property located in Cotton Grove Township, tax map sixteen, lot six B, containing six point three-two acres, more or less. Property is located on the north side of Jersey Church Road, approximately twelve-hundred-and-fifty feet east of the New Jersey Church Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RS, Low Intensity Residential District, to that of RE1 Rural Agricultural District. I'd like to introduce this with a couple of slides, because this is going to be an interesting rezoning request, uh, because...
If you do that, let me open the public hearing.
Okay.
We declare the public hearing open. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. If you can see the zoning map on the screen or in front of your monitors, you'll see the area that is being requested for rezoning, uh, to RE1. The applicants are in hopes of trying to place a double-wide mobile home on this property, but they're in the middle of a large area of RS zoning, which is restricted against mobile homes. It's primarily established for single-family stick-built homes. Um, with this rezon... please take notice of the amount of development that has occurred on this, in this particular part of the area, primarily housing that occurred back in the eighties, nineteen eighties, and that's important to know. Also, down south on Jersey Church Road, right across from the property, is predominantly, if not totally, single family stick built homes. Church is adjacent to it, and then there are some manufactured housing that I believe the applicant is going to make you aware of in the vicinity. As I go to the next slide, I wanted to zoom out a little bit, because one of the opportunities to rezone property is to extend a zoning district that you're asking for, to grab onto that district and extend it. The closest RA one zoning is about eight hundred feet away to the east, at this point where you see the red line. That's the closest RA one zoning, and you'll see all the other developments around to the north and south. The next RA one is to the west, about twenty eight hundred feet away. So it's going to be difficult to extend an existing district, because they're in the middle, instead of being on the wings, they're in the middle of this development. Another one, this is the neighborhood that is adjacent to this property, and I'll refer back to this during our staff analysis. These are homes that were built primarily in the eighties, they're split level, they're ranch style homes, brick homes, and then the last picture I have, I don't know if the Coxes can confirm that this is what it looks like today, this was a Google street view that I had, because they've been working on this property a while, but I believe this is going to be the area where the double wide is going to be located. And I wanted to show this, because it's important to get a scaled distance of where this home's going to be sitting, as they are wanting to place it, because you can see with them asking for such a large piece, where is it on, and they would be entering here. Mr. Chairman, if it would please the board, I'd be welcome to allow the Coxes to come forward and express, they have a PowerPoint presentation themselves, which shows you the homework that they've placed on this, and I'll defer to you to bring them up.
Y'all want to come on up? We appreciate you.
I'm just going to read it, because it's going to be a lot easier for me, okay? You want to go first?
If I can interject this, we have either an apparatus that you can use, or you can just say next slide, and we'll change it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, we are requesting the rezoning of our property from RS to RA one, in order to build our forever home within our budget. Since acquiring the six point three two acres, we have had the land survey cleared, graded, installed new culverts, applied, and received a sole evaluation from the health department, and the authorization to construct permit from essential permitting, as well as having the power ran by Energy United, and the water meter set by Davidson Water. We have several family members that have property on Jersey Church Road. My grandparents have owned this land since nineteen seventy-one. Originally, our initial desire was to build a home close to my Asian grandmother, however, due to delays with permitting, inflation, and the hike in interest rates, we have came to the decision that this is the right path for us financially. Currently, a two thousand square foot stick built home is ranging from two hundred and sixty thousand dollars plus site upgrades. An eighteen hundred square foot home, modular home, is two hundred and ten thousand plus site upgrades. And the manufactured home that we have chosen is two thousand two hundred and eighty square foot, for a hundred and thirty-four thousand plus site upgrades. We have been working towards this goal for the past two and a half, three years, and exhausted all efforts before coming to this conclusion. Out of the partial, the one hundred and six parcels on Jersey Church Road, sixty one of them are zoned RA one, thirty-two RS, nine RA two, two PDH, one RM one, and one LI. Our current property tax value is forty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for this partial. Once our home is appraised, I'm sorry, once our home is appraised, tax value is estimated to be in the two hundred and forty thousand range. Surrounding tax values range from one twenty to two ninety, so we don't feel like our home will affect property tax values. We are also going to be providing pictures of homes that we, the home that we intend to use and then set up. All the pictures that we will be submitting are either manufactured or mobile homes within a mile radius of our property. There is also a trailer park within a mile radius of our property. We do appreciate your time and consideration with this matter.
Thank you very much.
Do you have some slides?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I missed, it's another person that would like to speak later, who's got the slide presentation.
I had stuff on mine, I submitted pictures too.
They may have it in their packet, or they're the pictures of your mobile home that you're wanting to...
There are pictures of a mobile home, there's a piece of paper saying that it will be on a permanent foundation from Clayton Homes.
They're in our packet. They're in our packet, yeah. We got them.
And then there's pictures also of the mobile homes in the area, and there should be a map pointing out.
I did want to make one correction, because when he showed from the road, you actually can't see any of that, that roof that you see way in the background, I'm about fifty foot past that. So, I mean, as far as the Google map, and this is where it's going to be, we're way back further in the property, where, I mean, literally, the only thing next to us is the graveyard on one side, and two homes. We're not very visible to begin with.
We're eight, I walked it, it's seven hundred and ninety-six feet away from the road. You're behind a barn on the other side of that hill, you cannot see us from Jersey Church Road.
Even if he could see you, that's okay. Thank you, you've done a good job.
I'd like for you to have a seat there and answer any questions that they might have. Open the rest of the public hearing, anyone that wants to speak either for or against it, y'all come up.
That's me, and Nat Huddleston, I'm a registered nurse, and I have been doing home health care in the area of New Jersey Church Road for twenty years, and a lot of the homes actually on New Jersey Church Road, I have visited both mobile homes and manufactured homes and stick built homes. And I was actually here for a midway zoning thing, and just happened to be here that night, and I knew the area, and I asked to speak, because I feel that we all need our American dream, you know, our home, I knew the exact house that her grandmother lived in, and I knew the area behind the house, and where they were planning on putting the house, and I knew that it was not visible from the road even, because when you go, like, in the driveway, you go up a hill, and then their house will be over here to the left, and it's not even visible at all from the road, I mean, so I felt like I needed to speak that night, on how I believe that they should be able to do it. And I was asked to come back tonight by one of the zoning board members and speak, so I did, I did my little presentation about how, you know, the American dream is our, housing is our human right, and homeownership is an important part of our American dream. And that's what all of us do want, is our American dream. American dream is defined as, by providing an upward mobility, and upward mobility for Heather and Garrett would be to be able to be in a home, their home that they chose on their family land, that she actually grew up, you know, knowing, they helped to build a barn back there, and they realized that, you know, working hard is part of the American dream, that's what they've done, in order to be able to get this manufactured home. Rural life, you know, is the heart of Davidson County, y'all know that, we all live here because of that, we all love the farmland mixed with, you know, our businesses, our homeowners, everybody loves Davidson County, because we have that versatility, I guess it is, and her manufactured home, I actually, after this happened, I got in touch with Heather, and asked her to send me pictures, asked her if I could go to the land and walk around it, her manufactured home, I do have a picture of one like that later on in the thing, but this manufactured home, it will be built under the same, like, guidelines, it's not exactly the same as a stick built, it is under HUD guidelines, so it is a nicely built manufactured home. I believe the one that they chose is almost twenty-two, twenty-three hundred square feet, it has a beautiful porch on the front and the back, it's going to be covered, and it's going to be a brick foundation. And they, I did do some research, and they do not lose their home as much, their value as much as what people think, it's a myth. If they're kept under great conditions and kept up, it's just like a stick home. If they're kept up and under great conditions, they appreciate, so I believe that this home will not affect the value of other homes in the area. I took some pictures of some homes in the area the day that we went out there, and this is the pictures that I found, there's, you know, a newly stick built home here, and there's some other manufactured homes that are there, some of them are bricked in. There was a mobile home park, and I did drive behind on Green Meadows, and behind there where I was familiar with. And I then researched homeowners in the area, and also who was currently living in some homes, and some of the homeowners are not even who are present in the homes in that area, the ones, there's some built in late nineteen sixties, seventies, eighties, like Keith was talking about, and a lot of those are now being rental property. So I don't feel like you're going to have any of the landowners coming at y'all, you know, wanting to see you, because this beautiful home that they have picked out is going to be placed on the land. And same as her, I had done the value, looked up the value of their home, and all the upgrades, and everything, and it's actually, after they put their home on there, it will increase the value of the land and the home that they will currently be on, and that is, you know, an important part, it's not going to hurt the community, the rural environment, it's still going to be the same environment there, in that area. Is that all? Okay. In closing, I don't know them personally, I am just here because I feel that we're all entitled to our American dream, and I hope that y'all will really consider allowing them to have it. We did walk the land, and right about where, well, it does say site, where the black dot is, you cannot see their home from any point, the back, where you have twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-two is Green Meadows Road, and that road, there's a lot of, like, woods in between them and the people back here, down the road, down there, if you come out of the driveway and go left, there's a new development of homes, but it's kind of in a curve, and you can't see it from their home unless you drive down there, if you're at the end of the driveway and you look, you can see like one home. And their home on this side, back, I mean, the land is a graveyard, and the other side, the five C is a stick built home that a gentleman has put there, and I saw him outside that day, we were there, I didn't stop and speak, but it's a nice home, but also will have a trail line, a tree line in between him and their home.
We appreciate you coming, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there any, there is, someone else wants to speak either for or against?
Good evening, board, my name is Christian Shepler.
Pull that mic up for a little bit.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, board, my name is Christian Shepler, I'm a nephew to Garrett and Heather Cox, and I wasn't planning to speak today, but I just wanted to give a little piece about how, who they are as people. Currently, I'm a pharmacy technician at Lexington Medical Hospital, and been doing that for about a year now, been a pharmacy tech at Walgreens off of Erie for a year prior, and currently, I'm still going to school to become a doctor hopefully one day. And I remember during a time, when I was in school, where I wasn't able to sleep at home, and they were able to actually give me a home for a few months, so I can continue my education, not worry about where I'm going to have a roof over my head, or a meal to have dinner with family. And I know how important that is, family is just to me, and I know how important it's to them, and how difficult it is for them to watch them deal with trying to get housing to live and keep growing. So I just wanted to say that piece, and let you know how much they are, and how good working Americans and citizens they are, a part of Davidson County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak either for or against this issue? Mr. Cox, y'all have any further comments? Okay?
Excuse me, one second. Number six?
You have to come up, sir.
Grandmother. I'm sorry. They don't know that, nobody said that. That's your grandmother, number six.
I'm her grandmother. There you go.
So you're not against it, are you? I didn't think so.
I know that's not how people are.
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
I've got a couple, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Leonard, these other places that we've seen that are manufactured homes, how were they able to...
The homes that you were looking at, were either in the RA one zoning district, that's out there, let me expand the picture a little bit, you'll see the RA one zoning, that's out in here, there's a, I apologize, there's some mobile homes here, there's one, there's a mobile home park over here, there's a mobile home or two over here, they're in, either in the RA one district, or if there are any that are up in here, it was, they were there prior to zoning. So the mobile homes that you've seen are in the vicinity, but they're within, you know, half a mile of this particular district. The predominant area, the predominant immediate area around this property is primarily just stick built homes.
You have another? No, sir. Anyone else, questions from the board?
No, we're ready to roll on, so we'll get to... Staff recommendations, Mr. Chairman?
No.
No?
Don't do that.
All right.
Chuck, you have any comments?
Mr. Leonard, was a zoning application property inquiry made for this property?
It was at the time of the planning board meeting, we did so and found no violations in any other department in the county.
Thank you, sir.
May I declare the public hearing closed? Mr. Leonard, what's the staff recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate this, every now and then, there comes an issue where a debate is started between the philosophy of zoning versus what some would just call common sense. Why would anyone not approve something or recommend approval of something when there's no opposition? When the grandmother lives in front of it, when they are inheriting a piece of property that they just want to put their home in? That's the common sense answer. Your staff has an ordinance to defend, and as the levels of recommendation come to you, they come from the staff level, as we recommend, based on the philosophy of zoning. It goes to your planning board, who looks at different factors, and then it comes to the board of commissioners, who hear through a public hearing process, other additional factors, taking in the recommendations and making up the decision. The reason the planning staff is recommending denial of this is strictly based on philosophy of zoning, and what zoning was created for. It's two basic purposes for zoning, one is to maintain a property value level of an area as it's been created, that's the first philosophy. The second argument or purpose in zoning is to maintain the continuity of the trend of housing or the trend of development that has occurred in the area, to try to keep it consistent. If this area of Jersey Church Road was still mainly farms, pastures, and zoned RS, which would not allow for mobile homes, the staff would say, well, there hasn't been an established pattern of development determined to protect, or to perpetuate, therefore, approving a rezoning of this nature would be easier, because what we're asking, or what the applicants are asking, is for a spot zoning, taking a small area and zoning it, and to the benefit of one, and I'm not saying to the detriment of others, but taking a spot out of a larger piece and rezoning it. So in this case, what we've tried to do, is we tried to look at the value part of this, in determining what our recommendation would be, and it is true, and it's important for us to know, that the value of the homes that were established back in the eighties... So in this case, what we've tried to do is we tried to look at the value part of this and determining what our recommendation would be. And it is true and it's important for us to know that the value of the homes that were established back in the eighties, um, have risen to a point after, you know, in the nineties or two thousands, they rose and they peaked out. And as the decades click off, if you looked at those values of the homes, the value is probably starting on the decrease now because those homes are nearing forty years of age. So we don't believe that this double wide is necessarily gonna impact in a negative way the values of the homes that are out there. So that philosophy of saying, trying to protect the value, uh, culture of the area, we don't feel is, is detrimental. The continuity of the land trend or the land development pattern is what we're trying to protect. Here again, these homes that, that you see, no one's opposed to this, but, uh, the pattern has been set and determined that this is all stick-built housing. And the philosophy of zoning is to can perpetuate that and to consistently, uh, enhance that. And that's the reason that the staff feels like it needs to defend the ordinance by saying the pattern's been set and we recommend to continue the pattern. But that's from your staff. So we recommend denial based on the philosophy of zoning to perpetuate the, um, uh, the, the consistency of the pattern.
Are there any comments from the board for the staff?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no comment, I make a motion we approve.
Second.
The rezoning request and adopt a resolution.
We're not gonna vote yet. I haven't asked for the board if they have anything else that they need.
You just did.
No. I asked if they had any questions for him. But it's a staff recommendation.
Okay, go ahead.
But I appreciate it.
Motion stands, sir.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. It, it is in fact, spot zoning. It is against our ordinance. If perhaps that was to go to court, they would find it was spot zoning and they would not approve it. The state would not approve it. The problem that you have is that both sides of that RA1 are now open to be zoned to that RA1. And they can put anything that is there for the RA1 on either side of it, whereas right now, the folks that have built there, the folks that are there have gone to the, uh, place where they got the RS so that they would not have those kinds of hu- of homes. Now you've had a, a situation come up a little bit earlier on Mor- Morrison Grove, whereas the guy that came in did, did a grand job. But the guy that come back, he's not doing such a grand job. Y'all may put this thing in there and it may be just as, as plain as you get, you, you say, and, and it may be just as good as you say. And you may, you know, take care of it the way you say. But we don't have any control whatsoever of what the other people will put on the side of that because they will now be contiguous to the RA1 and they will be allowed to do that. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, this may be a, I, I, it's been a long time since we built our home, okay? Traditionally, do you buy the, do you buy the home to, to do all this work that they've done on the land before you do the zone, zoning request? Uh, see what I'm saying? If, if they had not done all that and they asked for this rezoning, uh, and, and then found out that they couldn't, see that would save, have saved them from buying, you know, I know they, they were given the property but spent the money that they've already spent to move onto the place.
I, I, I think you're, you're right. And I think from what I've heard, uh, that their initial, uh, intention was to build the home.
Right, right.
And so they did all the preliminary work, uh, it was, a house can go in almost any zoning district. So they, they went through with the process of pushing in a driveway and getting a septic tank and all that kinda stuff approval. And it was only when the cost of, of housing went up that they determined that this was the only route that they felt they could take at this time.
And that's, you know, that's understandable.
It is.
It is.
To support my motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'm, I'm not finished.
Oh, I didn't know you were talking.
Well, I was.
All right, go ahead.
I passed it on to her. The, the other thing, and, and you keep saying that this is the same thing as a, uh, manufactured, I mean, as a, um, site-built home. And it is not. You pull the manufactured homes in on a trailer and you set the other ones on there as a prefab. There is a difference. You don't have a serial number on the, on the sites that have been built as a box. You do have a serial number on the others. There's, there's also, whenever you put the home in there, whenever you put the, uh, home in there, if you put nothing on it but the, the trailer itself, it will start depreciating every day. Now you, they taking into consideration all the stuff that they put on it and they build that up, but it doesn't make it go upwards. It still makes it go down.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say one thing for the board. I got a, uh, manufactured home on Jersey Church Road that I own and they just built fifteen brand-new houses across the street from it and they all bringing top dollars. So I don't think my manufactured home decreased the value of the new homes across the street. So, um, I grew up, I grew up in my manufactured home, so I think just as much of those as, um, I do a stick-built, so.
But I, you know, I think, I think that we do have to consider the economy as it stands right now and some people can't even do that. You, we're just gonna tell them you're, you're not welcome?
Well, you're gonna look at the economy and, and, and you gotta look at your neighbors next door, but this whole family and grandma's ready to go and the whole family's ready to, uh, they got their blessings. So I don't really see in the middle of this property where it would hurt a thing myself.
That's the Canadian beef thing.
But anyhow, I've said my piece and we'll wait till we vote and roll on.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something.
And, you know, everything that everybody says is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. You, you, okay. Uh, you know, my, my mother-in-law and my father-in-law still live in a single-wide trailer. And I don't think, I, I, I get it when you're looking at Bermuda Run, when you're looking at, you know, seven-hundred-thousand-dollar houses and everything like that, there's a, there's a place for that. We're talking about rural Davidson County. And, uh, and, you know, I've, I've been down that, that road a lot. And a brand-new manufactured home would look a whole lot better than some of the stick-built houses that's out there. Not saying nothing about nothing, including mine, that I live in right now. So, I mean, I, I get that we're trying to protect that and I respect you and your opinion. I really do. And, and what we do here. But, um, that, I just, you know, I'm like, uh, I'm like Commissioner Yates, Commissioner Schale, that, uh, you know, it's, it's rough living now. It's rough to even go buy groceries, nevertheless try to put a family together. And you living on family land that you've owned before these houses was even built. Y'all owned that land before they built any of those houses. They build the houses after you've owned the land. And then for us to tell you what you can do with the land after, y'all been there before anybody. That just ain't right. So I'm for it.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, may I say?
Yes, you may. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Uh, I would just like to say this. We, we sit here all the time and we listen to people, you know, basically tell us that it's their land and they can do with it what they wanna do. And I'm a hundred percent in agreement with that. It's your land, you've worked it, you've busted your tail and made it nice, and I think you should put a house there. And I'm done.
Amen. Thank you.
Their choice of a house. Their choice of a house.
I do not disagree with whether or not you can live in a mobile home. I lived in one. When I was in, in Georgia, I had to live in a mobile home down there. They're, they're good homes. They are not bad. I'm not trying to say that they're bad by saying any of the things that I'm saying. They are probably better, as some of them said, than some of the stick-built homes that are there. You've got a zoning ordinance. One of the things that you have to guard against whenever you look at a zoning ordinance is you cannot be arbitrary and capricious in what you do. And what that means is that you're supposed to follow the zoning ordinance. That means that we don't play God and we don't say, these people ought to be able to break the zoning laws. And then when they come up here next time, well, those people over there, they can't break the zoning law because it's got something else. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, that deserves a response, Mr. Chairman, because I don't agree with you. Otherwise, this would be an absolute decision and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be sitting up here with a mechanism for us to overturn it.
You don't, you don't have to agree with me, Commissioner Schale. What I'm telling you is that's the law.
Well, why is it coming before us for us to make a decision? We have the right to turn it down or deny it, so quit trying to put the burden on anybody whose side is supportive. Because that's wrong.
If I...
Government's trying to play God.
Do what?
Now, like a government's trying to play God. It's their land.
That's what the government seems to think nowadays.
Sometimes the government needs to get out of way.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
That's all right. It's, it's, it's contentious. It's contentious because of where it is and where it's located. It is against the zoning ordinance. It is against the spot look, spot zoning. It is, uh, out of character with the rest of the homes that are in, in front and behind that. And, and if you, if you go by what the zoning ordinance says, you c- you can't approve it. Now you can just say, yeah, we're gonna approve it, but what you've done now is you've said that the zoning ordinance doesn't mean anything now. And then whenever it comes up again, how you gonna enforce the zoning ordinance then?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Okay.
If, uh, if the people of Davidson County decided they wanted to vote in new commissioners and the new commissioners came in here and decided they didn't like the zoning ordinance, could they not vote to change the ordinance?
They have to follow the same ordinance. They have the same, uh, ability to have this board change zoning. Is that correct?
But a majority could.
So we can zone, we can do that. We can say, okay, we're not gonna apply that. Now it applies to the zoning ordinance. Now you're in line with what the ordinance says.
Simple. Mr. Chairman, if I might?
You might.
Um, it may be helpful to, to fall back a little bit and to talk about spot zoning because spot zoning is not in and of itself illegal. And so let me go back and just talk about the, if, with the permission of the board, let me just talk about the definition of it. And then perhaps how you can get to a place with it even being spot zoning where it could be approved, if that were the determination of a majority of the board. There's a North Carolina Supreme Court decision which says that a zoning, and I'm gonna paraphrase this a little bit, but a zoning amendment which singles out and reclassifies a relatively small tract owned by a single person and surrounded by a much larger area uniformly zoned so as to relieve the smaller tract from restrictions to which the rest of the area is subjected is called spot zoning. And I think that's clearly what we're, we're dealing with here. Now, the law goes on to say that when adopting a spot zone, a local government has an affirmative obligation to establish that there is a reasonable public policy basis for doing so. That's very helpful to us because it says when adopting that, which says you can adopt that. And then it also sets out there are four criteria which the appellate courts of this state have said you are to consider. And with your permission, I'll, I'll briefly go through those. The first factor to be considered is determining whether spot zoning is reasonable is the size of the tract. The general rule is that the smaller the tract, the more likely the rezoning will be held invalid. However, it is important to consider the tract in relation to the size of the other tracts around it. Can you go back to, we got the map up?
It's there, it is there.
And here you see that it is not smaller than the other tracts around it. And that would suggest that it is not, uh, an island in comparison to those other, other tracts around it. And so that would say, argue for it being, uh, a, a public policy basis for doing that. The second is compatibility with the plan. The, uh, Scott has spoken to that. The third is, I think, significant balancing benefits and detriments. Who, if anyone, is harmed and the relative magnitudes of the benefits and the harms. The, uh, the fourth factor is the relationship between the proposed use and the current uses of adjacent properties. Well, this is residential, the current use of all of the adjacent properties is residential. Uh, the law says that the greater the disparity between uses, the more likely the rezoning is to be held illegal. Here it doesn't seem as if on the face, but there is such a disparity. Um, thank you for letting me to interject that. I just thought it might be helpful to talk to you about, uh, the practical elements of determining whether, uh, the law would allow this spot zone. Uh, I think in considering those factors, the board could determine that there is a practical public policy use for allowing this rezoning.
You agree with it?
I, I can add this. He, uh, Mr. Frye has given you state law. From your own zoning ordinance, there's a certain group of standards that you can choose to rezon a piece of property from. Is it a manifest era? No, it's not an era. Uh, is there, uh, are you extending the boundary of the RA1? Contiguous. It doesn't qualify. But there is a third one that says due to changing conditions in the area. Traditionally, changing conditions in the area we view as physical changes are more mobile homes coming in than houses. We can't prove that at this point. But the ordinance doesn't say physical changes. Are there other changes that have occurred in the area that you feel, the board feels, warrant a rezoning? Could the fact that the values of the adjoining properties over their four decades have changed causing changing conditions to where this placement of a double wide would not impact it, whereas twenty years ago it would possibly impact the value of a neighbor, neighboring property? So in, in order for us to try to protect ourselves in making these decisions, if we can tie it to some type of, something that's already in the ordinance, whether it's the changing conditions portus, portion of it, uh, based on the, 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 the cost of, of housing these days versus the depreciation, possible depreciation of existing homes, I think that may be able to stand, uh, if any appeal were, were to take place.
So would you change your?
No, we're, we're gonna stay protective of our ordinance from a staff. We feel that the staff is tied to that ordinance and that's why we wanna stand firm with our ordinance.
If I'm reading what, um, Mr. Frye is telling us that the, uh, items that we've got there make it where we can do that without being in violation of the board. And that being the case, you can make your voter now.
Make, uh, motion stands as per.
Sorry, did you got that, miss, miss, miss?
Uh, the lady clerk?
Yes, sir.
Madam clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Cast your votes.
Enjoy your home, folks.
Thank you, Scott. Absolutely.
Enjoy your home, folks.
Don't have to tally yet.
And that motion carries by those seventy.
There you go. Enjoy it.
Thank you, guys.
Enjoy your home.
Enjoy your home. You could've been in it thirty minutes early.
Yeah.
We have a consent agenda other than the one that was approved by, uh, eight V. Are there any other items? Are there any other items need to be pulled?
Also, it's the addition of eight G. The addition of eight B and, and the eight G is, has been pulled, so.
Well, I don't think we have any other business. Is there a motion to?
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I thought I did that. I put a circle around it.
I think Jenna's read. I'll get with it.
Have a second on that?
Second.
On the pen.
Oh, you waiting on some votes?
I need votes.
You can't read my mind, you're.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by vote seventy, right?
Good job, Commissioner. Motion due.
Uh, we don't, we have to be.
It would have helped a lot for all of those things to have been brought up before I did anything.
So is this project, uh, public hearing not, we not doing anything?
No, that was, that was another item that's, who, who are together, so we'll bring it back.
It was included on there.
Yeah, I can't keep up.